Good afternoon, welcome to the May 16th Policy Session of the Phoenix City Council. Thank you so much for joining us. I'll call the meeting to order. We will wait for roll call until we take a formal, a formal vote on the budget and we'll begin with council information and follow-up requests, beginning with Councilwoman Anne O'Brien.
Thank you Mayor. So from coast to coast, this morning I flew in from our nation's capital where I spent the last week meeting with members of our congressional and Senate delegation to advocate on behalf of Phoenix. In these meetings, I expressed the importance of receiving federal funds to help the construction of our advanced purification system on 91st Avenue and to support appropriations for increasing the height of Bartlett Dam to capture more water along Salt River Project. As you all know, the Colorado River is at historically low levels and Arizona isn't just the baby state because we were the last of the 48, but we're also the baby state when it comes to the Colorado River allocations, meaning the Central Arizona Project Canal is the lowest priority for river water rights. The more cuts the federal government make on allocations to the river, the more North Phoenix is going to feel the squeeze. And while we can't change where we, where we are on the priority list, we can continue to build infrastructure to shrink Phoenix's dependence on Colorado River and ask for federal funds to build that needed infrastructure. Conservative estimates claim that if we'll build out our advanced purification system, Phoenix would be 50% less dependent on Colorado River water. This is a crucial piece of infrastructure that will allow Phoenix to be an integral part of this system to preserving the Colorado River. I also took time to meet with representatives from several, several federal agencies such as the FAA, where we discussed needed investments and improvements at the Deer Valley Airport. The Department of Housing and Urban Development, where we discussed the outdated equation used by HUD to allocate housing choice vouchers. I expressed to them my frustration with us being the fifth largest city in the country and having approximately 7,300 vouchers available to our residents as compared to the sixth largest country and, city in the country, Philadelphia, who gets over 23,000. I also met with the Department of Interior and the Bureau of Reclamation to discuss with them all the water conservation programs Phoenix is looking into and have already implemented, from the new water smart homes being built in District 2, to the rebate incentives for switching out to low-flow toilets and smart irrigation systems. I did ask them to help us pass federal legislation to make it easier to offer turf back, buyback programs here in Phoenix. Currently, any potential residential turf buyback programs would actually end up being taxable income. So we want to remove this as taxable income so that our citizens aren't being taxed on an incentive program to help us conserve water. I believe that representing the city means more than just sitting behind the dais. It also means advocating on the state and federal level, so as much of what we've been able to do as a city comes from grant and programs administered, administered by state and federal agencies. I wasn't just in DC to meet with our federal partners. I went for DC, to DC for the National Police Week and to honor the five officers from Phoenix who were recognized for their heroism and bravery on the early morning of February 11th, 2022. Those officers were Tricia Eskridge, Chris Jones, John Noe, Austin Peru, and Travis Spitler. They were the, the officers who answered the call, which was essentially an ambush where the caller said that they had had a home invasion with three attackers that had killed his wife. Five of our officers ended up being shot that evening with three additional hurt by shrapnel and a poor innocent baby was used as bait when the officers were no longer willing to approach the house. Thankfully, we didn't lose an officer that night. It was also an honor to be present at the ceremony where officers all over the country were recognized for their heroism and bravery in the face of danger. Additionally, the city of Phoenix was honored to get to be one of the few agencies to lay a wreath at the tomb of the unknown soldier in Arlington Cemetery. And lastly, it was a solemn morning yesterday when police officers, family members, and supporters from all over the country joined together on the Capitol lawn where the names of officers killed in the line of duty were read off, one by one. Two of those were from Phoenix. They were Officer Philip James Vavernak Jr. and Sergeant Thomas Crawford Craig. I cannot express enough my gratitude for the men and women in blue who put their lives on the line every single day so that we can feel, feel safe in our communities and neighborhoods. Thank you all. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for that important work. We'll go to Councilwoman Guardado, followed by Councilman Robinson.
Thank you Mayor. First off, we got news today that Governor Hobbs and Attorney General Mice will be taking action against over 100 fraudulent sober living homes throughout the state that have cheated our state of hundreds of millions of dollars and preyed on our Native American residents. My office has been working with neighbors who have been dealing with, with these fraudulent sober living homes for the past three years. We have met with residents and our city departments, worked with our community action officers, coordinated with the Arizona Department of Health Services, and finally worked with state-level law enforcement to address this issue. Today is a huge victory for both our city residents and patients who had, who were promised care. If you or someone you know suspects a fraudulent or unregistered sober, sober living home, Governor Hobbs is encouraging residents to report them by dialing 211 and select option 7. Next, I wanted to thank all the neighborhood leaders and elected officials and city staff that took part in the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Project Haven in District 5 this past Monday. I was honored to be joined by so many of my constituents who helped push forward a vision of care and support for seniors in our community that are experiencing homelessness. As, as we continue to address the homelessness crisis in our city, it is going to take each and every one of us doing our part. Project Haven has proven that when there are real commitments and accountability for communities, our neighbors will say yes in my backyard. And welcome smaller specialized facilities. Now more than ever, we need to share the love and ensure that every district in our city provides services and housing for our most vulnerable residents. Next, I want to invite residents out to our first community cleanup of the Camelback Corridor. We will be meeting this Saturday, May 20th, at 8:00 AM at the Maryvale Bridge United Methodist Church at 4802 North 59th Avenue. We will focus on this cleanup on improving the area around Camelback Road and 59th Avenue, in combination with our organizing efforts that are helping create a new neighbor, neighborhood association and small business alliance. I want to thank the Neighborhood Services Department, especially the incredible Rosie Espinoza, for all of their work in partnership with my office on these efforts. I am excited to see everyone out this Saturday and especially look forward to seeing Glendale City Council member Jaime Aldame join our efforts as we begin to work in partnership with Glendale on a shared vision of safety and community along the Camelback Corridor. I do want to take another moment to congratulate a friend and true champion of our city employees, Jason Stokes. On his upcoming retirement, Jason has honorably served our Unit 7 city employees and members of ASPATIA since before I was on council. I have appreciated Jason's friendship and support over the past few years, especially as we work together to address the need to improve wages and benefits for city workers. I hope that Jason sees the upcoming MOUs and the historic investment we will be making in our city employees as a testament to the work he has put in over the years. Congratulations, Jason, on your retirement. Finally, as the school year winds down, I want to congratulate all those graduating, especially want to thank Alexia Heredia and her classmates from Maryvale High School, who worked over the past year on projects to improve our community. Thanks to their hard work in 110-degree weather, knocking on doors, and working with different residents, um, we can tell that, we can say that they probably helped gate 11 athletes in our community. On a more personal note, I also want to take a moment to congratulate my son David on his graduation. Next week, he will be leaving elementary school and going into junior high, um, looking into a new era for him and very proud to say that he's graduating as a dual-language student. So very happy for him and congratulations to him and I am very proud of him. Thank you Mayor.
Congratulations. We'll go to Councilman Robinson and then the Vice Mayor.
Um, thank you Mayor. Uh, first of all, I want to follow up on something that Councilwoman O'Brien mentioned. It is National Police Week and I want to take the opportunity to thank all Phoenix police officers, anyone who has had an opportunity, as Councilwoman O'Brien had mentioned, had an opportunity to be back in DC during Police Week. It is an extremely solemn opportunity to pay tribute to police officers who have given, you know, the ultimate sacrifice. So, um, my thanks to each and every member of the Phoenix Police Department. I, I think the very least we can always do is recognize their sacrifices. That, um, secondarily, and, um, on a lighter note, the, we're finishing up our first month in office and I want to thank all the city departments that have truly been helpful in our quest to really get in place. Our staff within District 6 is doing, has been doing our Herculean task in getting up to speed on a host of issues. Um, the vast majority of concerns we have coming in from residents have been about streets, homeless issues, neighborhood parks and rec, and a host of issues surrounding anything involving our city, obviously. And all city departments have been great in responding to the concerns and the needs that our staff and the office have had, which has allowed us to respond most appropriately to the residents. So I, I thank, I thank everyone for that. And later this week, Thursday, the 18th, we'll be at the Peak Neighbor Association event, just an opportunity to bring them up to speed on a host of things that are going on in the city. Then Saturday, the 20th, the Arcadia Osborne Association Annual Meeting, we'll be doing the same thing there, helping them to, or bringing them up to speed on things going on. They want an update on the city council office, everything within District 6. And lastly, I'd like to invite the community to join, join me next Friday, the 26th, at 7:00 AM for coffee and donuts or snacks or what have you at Hillside Spot on Warner Road out in Alwatukey. Um, we will be out and about at least three, four times a, a month in the council district in different parts, just meeting with the community, talking to them first, face-to-face and firsthand, so we can address their, their concerns more directly. So with that, Mayor, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, and then Councilwoman Pastor?
Thank you Mayor. Um, and we have a slide deck. And I think you can just go to the second slide, please. Um, the District 17 kicked off May out in the community. First up, we held our Smith Park Mobile Office Hours last Thursday and we got feedback on Pilot Park programming efforts to bring soccer and basketball courses to the community. We also hosted our Central City Community Meeting at Burton Bar Library with over 50 residents and neighborhood leaders in attendance. Um, and we were privileged to have our Office of Homeless Solutions, the Crisis Assistance Program, um, so Phoenix Fire and the Parks Department in attendance, um, and our Streets Department. So thank you so much to all who attended. Uh, what we have gotten requests from, from residents for our next community meeting is presentations on gun violence prevention efforts at the city of Phoenix as well as historic preservation. And finally, I was honored to be the keynote speaker at our Sister Cities Youth Ambassador graduation. Really amazing to see 12 graduates from across Phoenix. They'll be heading across the globe to our sister cities. We'll be, they'll be representing the city, um, and sharing their experiences from Phoenix. Next slide. It seems like every other week, we're hearing very good news and the amazing results from our American Rescue Plan strategic, uh, American Rescue Plan Strategic Plan. And one critical win for neighborhoods is the enterprise network connectivity and Wi-Fi, which are now available at Smith Park and three other neighboring District 7 parks. Access to free and affordable Wi-Fi is essential in our digital world. Next slide. Wanted to touch on, um, our work to engage with and offer people living around the Human Services Campus Safe Indoor Shelter. On Wednesday, um, as was, um, well reflected in the media, city, city staff engaged with approximately 54 individuals and I'm really pleased to share that they helped place 43 individuals into a shelter or a hotel. These block-by-block engagements are not new. We've been doing this targeted and well outreach cleanup effort since December of 2022. And again, I want to share that they have had about a 70% acceptance rate or a success rate. While there are certainly residents who have mixed feelings about the cleanups, I do want to spotlight a story from the Arizona Republic's coverage that shows how the city is making a really positive difference. There's a story about Barry Hayes and Daniel Mackey, who had been living on the streets for three months when they learned a few weeks ago that their block would be engaged. At first, they were skeptical because they had previously left a shelter where they hadn't felt safe, but outreach workers this time connected them with a different transitional shelter, which was run by our partners at Community Bridges. And Mackey shared that it was a smaller, much more mellow and much better fit for him and his friend. And he felt that it was going to work and he had very high hopes about it. So this is great. Want to highlight the success story. And again, 43 individuals were placed this time around. In fact, more people moved into that block that, than staff was expecting. That tells us a few things. One, word of mouth is building trust. And two, unsheltered residents are happy with the diverse options that we are providing them. So I want to, as always, thank Scott, Gina, and Rachel. Um, you've been working extremely hard and I think we're seeing very visible progress. I will also be inviting a few legislators next time to, uh, the cleanup so that they can see firsthand how Phoenix has, um, improved our process and, and working on a humane, thoughtful approach moving forward. Next slide. This year's state budget included historic investments in housing infrastructure. Investments will go a long way in building new temporary and permanent housing. I'm really excited about the $150 million in the Arizona Housing Trust Fund. The trust fund is a critical tool that can be used for a variety of projects, including building new housing and funding homeless shelters, transitional housing, and re-entry housing for formerly incarcerated people. But even more importantly, housing trust funds can be leveraged alongside American Rescue Plan dollars or private authority bonds from the AZ Commerce Authority to go even further to fund affordable housing developments that might not happen otherwise. Next slide. Finally, a few upcoming events where you will see our team. May 23rd will be at the Mission of Mercy Clinic Opening, which is located in South Phoenix. This new clinic will offer free medical services to uninsured families in the area, so we're super excited about that. June 17th, my office will be hosting our Second Annual Roosevelt Pool Party, from CPR classes to free giveaways. Um, there will be something for everyone in the family, so please join us. And all summer long, our team will be taking over heat relief shifts with our Office of Heat Response and Mitigation. Last Wednesday, Zoe and Morgan, who are two of our longtime interns, were helping by the zone. So if anyone's interested in signing up or helping us with a volunteer shift, please email us or call to, uh, join us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll wait for my slides. The mayor had to step away, so I'm taking over. She allowed me. Uh, May Coffee Chat recap. I want to thank everybody who joined us. We talked about street outreach, homeless encampments and cleanups, and a lot of community updates. We had a great, uh, conversation with staff and some of the needs that are, are wanted by the community. So thank you. Thank you to the staff. FCC is awarding 700,000 for its Affordable Connectivity Program Outreach Grant, which we applied in January. So I was able to attend the press conference and the trainee event hosted by FCC Chairwoman, uh, Jessica Rosen-Warsall, to learn more about the program and its goals to provide eligible residents with free or reduced internet service. Uh, this is all connected to the DEC as we started in 2020. That will be, uh, this will be rolling out into our communities and those that qualify, um, are welcome to join. And we will also have community organizations, uh, being a part of this. So, thank you. Last Thursday, uh, staff and I provided breakfast for every teacher support and supporting staff member at the Charles W. Harris School in District 4, West Side for Teacher Appreciation Week. What is very interesting is I work with their community, the Wake Up Club, and we do a lot of cleanups within that area. So it is nice, uh, to be part of that. And, uh, the principal and all these teachers, there's more, there were more, uh, participated and had breakfast. And you see Brody right there with his teacher. So next slide. Brody and I became buddies. Uh, Brody wanted to know what I did and how I changed policy. And he said, can you help me change my uniform policy? And I said, yes. And I said, but you have to do some work in order to change your uniform policy. And one of the teachers was there chuckling and I said, see this teacher? He's politically active. He can help you. So this is what I need you to do. I need you to figure out and write a petition. And on the petition, you write, uh, we want to change the, the rules, our uniform rules and put in what you would like to see. And then after that, get it blessed by your teacher, who's going to help you write it, and then go around the school and ask them if they're willing to sign your petition. I got a text and a picture of the signed petition from the principal. And we all chuckled because the principal was there when Brody and I were having this discussion. So, um, he's graduating and he'll be going on to Maryvale. And I'm very proud that I was a little bit of an influence at a certain point in his life, uh, to teach him civic engagement. And, uh, we'll see if the uniform changes. So, uh, stay tuned. Happy Mother's Day. Um, for many of you, or for many of us that shared our story in the AZ Central article, uh, you saw what is next for me in the sense of bringing, uh, blood tests to detect breast cancer to underserved neighborhoods. Uh, I'd like to thank Taylor Sealy for highlighting the women on this dais and the mothers on this dais, uh, who multitask and lead in many different ways. So in October, I will also host a Women's Health and Wellness Forum with leading doctors and cutting-edge medical technology companies that are going to support women's health, especially in the underrepresented communities. My month has been very busy, as you know. Graduation season is here. And I, uh, no longer sit on the Phoenix Union Board after 12 years. So I didn't, I normally, um, out for two or three days, uh, at, starting graduations at 8:00 and ending at 10:00 o'clock at night, but not this year. So I was able to attend the Phoenix College graduation. And every one of these pictures has a meaning. Oscar De La Salas was our keynote speaker. You see the board member, Maricopa Board Member. You see Imelda. Imelda has blossomed. She was, originally I met her when I was, uh, working on a woman's piece, small business entrepreneur, and she has now been recognized all over the place. She's had several recognitions, especially at the black and white. Um, then you see, uh, Natalia, who is saying peace. I met Natalia when she was at Central as a sophomore. And I didn't know the connection between her and I until she went home and told her mom, hey, I met so-and-so. Uh, her mom happened to be a woman that worked at a dry cleaner that my dad attended very often. And so they became friends. So when my father passed, we asked her to press his suit and get his, uh, clothing ready for him. And Natalia happened to be there and she says, you're the woman I met. So this year, she has now graduated from PC. Uh, she was in education and she will be moving on. And I am so proud of her because that's just a, it's a small world and a connection that I have with her. Then you see two young women at the bottom in the middle. You see Betty. Betty I met as an ACE, as an outreach director. She joined, uh, ACE, achieving a college education. And she struggled a bit. And so her and I became friends and I provided, uh, support systems around her. And she found me and she says, I'm graduating. I'd like to see you. And she says, and I'm really proud I'm graduating with my sister. At one point, they were homeless and I did help them around that space. So I am very proud to see the family achieving and thriving. You see a mariachi uniform right here. PC first started their mariachi, uh, group this year. I got a call saying, hey, I wanted them to perform for the swearing-in and they said, we can't because we don't have uniforms. So I hustled and helped and everybody in the city, Mitch helped me figure out how to get them uniforms. As you see, they performed at PC. They, he's wearing the uniform, but if you see the back, it's the bear, which is the mascot of Phoenix College. You see the group, uh, the mariachis, and it was the first time them playing at the ceremony. And what ended up happening is students at the end got up and started dancing in the pride of their heritage. So you see a bunch of teachers too, and then a young boy, uh, with his mom as she walked to get her diploma. So, uh, fun day, exciting, uh, to see all the happiness happening within our community. After that graduation, I attended, uh, Central Arizona Dental Society Foundation and the Arizona Dental Mission of Mercy, and it was their 10th anniversary celebration. If you know, anybody knows, in December, um, right now they're looking for volunteers, so anybody in the dentistry world and even just volunteers to check in. There are two days, December 9th and 10th, where those that need, uh, some assistance with their dental needs can line up and get appointments or line up and then go in and be able to get, uh, their needs serviced. And it happens within not, two days and it's full-force service. So they're all different types of dentists that are there and, uh, people helping. Uh, Clara, right here, as you see, uh, she, I met Clara because she worked for my father. Now she's part of this whole, whole elaborate piece. What ended the story behind the 10th anniversary is that we wouldn't have a 10th anniversary. They went to visit my father and said, hey, we need the Phoenix Coliseum. They're charging us left, uh, many, they're charging us and we're not able to afford it. He got on the phone, called the governor at that time and said, please do this. This is a service for our community. And ever since, they've been at Phoenix, uh, Veterans Coliseum. So I was able to celebrate because they honored him that night, uh, for, uh, inspiring and continuing that work. The other side of this is I did a veterans, a PC veterans, uh, dental clinic along with them and was able to serve, uh, many people in the community college area that were veterans to get the needs that they needed at that time and it was for free. Then on Saturday, I went and Charlie Jones, Pearson Place, Woodleya, Melrose, cleaning up that area and cleaning our canal. So I like to thank that community for always having cleanups once a month and doing what the right thing of keeping our community, uh, beautiful. Then I hosted the Second Annual Corridor Panel Discussion focusing on mobility and connectivity. Residents voiced their concerns about walkability and the TOD within that area. Um, I would like to thank Deputy City Manager Alan Stevenson, Jesus Sapien, Keeney Knudsen, and, uh, Jessica Medford Miller for joining me and to discuss some of the things that were happening on Central. Congratulations to Chad McCulsky, uh, Director of Aviation for being Airport Executive of the Year. Uh, that's awesome. Under his leadership, uh, he has dedicated head embarking on a net zero, carbon zero piece and, uh, achieving carbon-free electricity by 2030. Congratulations to, um, Cynthia Campbell for, uh, being placed on the Water Policy Council by, uh, Governor Hobbs and a co-host, Zona Pacheco, who is very active. And if you're part of her email list, you know all the resources that are happening within the community. She received the Yagula Award and so I wanted to recognize her. Next slide. Uh, Pool Party in Solito Park. Come join us, June 3rd, 10:00 AM. We're reopening the pool. Thank, and then next slide. June Community Chat. Here we go. Proposed Water Rates, Street Outreach, Community Updates, Safety Tips. We'll see you then. And finally, our public meeting on proposed water rates increases. That will be at Encanal Park Clubhouse. Please join me. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations. Uh, Councilwoman Hunt-Washington.
Thank you Mayor. Um, I just want to kind of give a couple of highlights from our office. I want to first say thank you to the city staff for insisting that we are getting settled in. Um, I appreciate all of the assistance. Um, also want to extend my thoughts and prayers to the families of the Officer Mark Aker and Sergeant Timothy Wheeler. Um, thank you for their service. We are- service. We are saddened by their loss. I also wanted to say a part of one of my highlights this last couple of days was participating or actually observing the enhancement at the Ninth Avenue cleanups. I want to say a special thank you to Homeless Solutions and the office. I spent three hours out there and observed it firsthand. I was pleased with the professionalism and care that we saw being offered to our unsheltered residents. We know it's not an easy problem. It doesn't have an easy solution, but we did see, for me, many times individuals were focusing on those that were refusing services or the lack of enough housing for every individual to be housed. But I choose to walk away with the experience of seeing the individuals that were coming to the, coming to the city for services. I personally saw two individuals who transitioned, who moved, one of them moved their tent closer to the area so that he could avail himself of service. And the other one, I saw personally run up to us looking for services. And I think those are the success stories that make this worthwhile. So I want to say thank you to the staff for a great job on a difficult circumstance. So I know we are continuing to make progress in that area. I just want to let you know that I appreciate it. Second, I wanted to highlight, we also, I spent a little time, teachers appreciation, teacher and staff appreciation. I was able to spend some time with the Roosevelt School District as well as the Levine School District as we prepared some tokens of appreciation for the teachers and staff who do the Lord's work. They dealt with busybodies like myself and chatty caddies and they do a good job raising our next generation. So we want to also special thank you to them. I also had the opportunity to celebrate with the inaugural Levine Sundown Bike Walk and Run that took us down the Levine Area Conveyance Channel. A fun time was had by all. We had lights on the bikes and the walkers. It was a great time. I look forward to the next one. And lastly, yesterday, myself and the Vice Mayor, we attended the Fifth Annual Science Fair Engineers of the Future in, in my district at the South Mountain Community College. We were able to participate and celebrate with 60 students as they built their prototypes of bridges here in our community. So it was also great to see the, the next generation again being cultivated to help serve us in the future. That is the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any additional council member updates? All right. Last week, the governor and the state legislature agreed to a budget plan that was passed and signed into law. The Housing Trust Fund was funded at $150 million and that is good news as well as some appropriations to combat homelessness. It is critically important that partners from across the state and valley step up to do their part in providing services as we work to make sure that our unsheltered community has good, safe options. At the legislature, there is, there's still concern about some of the bills that are moving forward and lack of action on others. There are bills that continue the state legislature's poor history on overreaching into local control, including our zoning code. I am proud of our city's track record on approving affordable housing developments and working to make developing affordable units easier. It is pretty common at this council when we have projects going forward for the council to ask for more affordable units than what is proposed and to push to make that a priority. We need to engage our community in planning efforts, including important efforts like the Central City South Transit Oriented Development Plan and honor the work that they have put into, our residents have put into, planning our community. It's critical that we maintain these abilities. If the legislature would like to partner with us to improve affordable housing, it would be wonderful if they gave us the tools that many other communities have, including inclusionary zoning. Would also love to see action on extending the Proposition 400 Maricopa County Transportation Plan. In 2021, the Maricopa Association of Governments passed a transportation plan unanimously with support of all cities, towns, tribal nations, and the business community in the county on how we want to allocate transportation dollars. Passing a plan with that many stakeholders is no small feat, but Maricopa County did it. We remain the only county in the state that is forced to receive approval from the state legislature to take our tax extension initiative to the ballot. The state legislature must act on this plan so we can continue to build a more robust and sustainable transportation system. And this conversation is made even more important as we may fade, may face cuts to other dedicated revenue streams that fund other departments such as public safety and parks. So many of Arizona's residents live in cities and cities need to be important partners as we craft state legislation. With that, we will move to the main event. Item number one is the Phoenix City Council's decision on the 2023-24 budget. I will now turn to City Manager Jeff Barton and Budget and Research Director Amber Williamson to present this item.
Mayor, members of the council, I just want to take a few moments and say thank you. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your guidance. Thank you for your stewardship and your direction as, as we've developed and crafted a balanced and fiscally sound budget. And I think that's no small feat considering that we're just three years removed, almost to the day, from the date that we first ran into COVID, which produced the sharpest and quickest deficit and, and economic downturn in the nation's history. So again, your, your guidance and your leadership have gotten us, not only through that, but you also got us to this point that we are today. And the budget that you are taking action on today is, is one that I'm extremely proud of. It's one that focuses on core city services, but it also focuses on your commitment and your belief in our most valuable resource, the 14,000 people that I call coworkers and employees of the city of Phoenix. And so I just want to say thank you for the work that you've done and, and your belief in, in our, in our collective staff. And with that, I'll turn it over to Amber.
Thank you, Jeff. Mayor, members of the council and residents, we are here today to ask for action on the fiscal year 2324 City Managers' Budget. Just to briefly recap our general fund status, this is the same as what was presented to you on May 2. It has not changed. Our estimated general fund resources are just over $2 billion, less our estimated expenditures to provide programs and services just under 1.9 billion, leaves us with a general fund surplus of $134 million. As always, we are required to adopt a balanced budget. So we are proposing allocating that proposed surplus or that estimated surplus to a variety of programs and services. Our city manager did collect community feedback from residents to ensure the budget proposed to you today reflects priorities of both the council and the community. We did that through 12 community budget hearings held from April 3 to the 15th, as well as collected feedback through our interactive budget tool, Fund Phoenix, on our website, as well as comments directly to the Budget and Research Department. Overall, we saw strong support for the proposed trial budget additions in the areas of public safety, resources for human services and homelessness, increases for employee compensation, ads for community or the Gated Alley Program, as well as for community arts grants, and also the proposed supplementals for Parks Department. In total, just over 700 comments from 360 residents. Those changes to the budget, to the trial budget totaling 1 million, I'm going to go over those briefly. I want to add that all the proposed additions are included in the City Council Report and also available on the website. So proposed increasing from 125,000 in the trial budget to 250,000 for community arts grant funding, $250,000 for cricket. This would increase up to three field opportunities in the city, $125,000 to increase Parks maintenance specifically to make repairs and improvements included at, including at Suenyo Park next fiscal year, as well as one-time funding of 250,000 for New Leaf's Phoenix Day Early Childhood Education Center. This provides affordable education for infants on up, as well as for street maintenance, $250,000. That would provide for a street sweeper dedicated to cleaning bike lanes across the city, as well as to clean up of washes and medians. So in total, general fund proposed additions of 134 million, allocating 85% of that to employee compensation, roughly estimated at 114 million. As our city manager indicated, our employees are our top asset. We know we have significant citywide vacancies, just under 17% vacancy rate. We want to invest in our employees to continue to develop the best workforce we can to deliver programs and services to the community. We have also already incorporated expenditure estimates for the class and comp study implementation next fiscal year. That will be coming to the council later this month. For the remaining 20 million, this would be allocated to critical supplementals as well as to our contingency fund. First, for continuity of services for vulnerable populations, this category totals to 7.6 million. The largest category, item in this category is 5.2 million. That would be for operations at homeless shelters in the city. For public safety responsiveness and criminal justice support, 3.8 million. The largest component of this is for the Phoenix Fire Department, 3.5 million to add 31 new sworn personnel to operate the new fire station at 19th Avenue and Chandler Boulevard, as well as to add a new rescue unit, all designed to reduce emergency response times. Also for healthy neighborhoods and community enrichment, 3.6 million. This includes expanding the funding for the Gated Alley Program as well as adding the 21 new Parks positions. 14 of those would create two new dedicated urban park ranger teams to provide park service at night, as well as provide an additional forestry crew to maintain our trees. And then 5 million for our contingency or rainy day fund. This would achieve the 4.5% of ongoing operating expense for what's proposed in the general fund budget. We also have non-general fund additions. These are for enterprise and special revenue funds, 1.5 million. These also have not changed since what was presented to you on May 2. Roughly 900,000 for Phoenix Sky Harbor. This is to add airport access agents as well as vehicles for the airport bureau. Additional funding for Development Services Fund, 500,000 to help, for positions to help manage the shape Phoenix permitting system, as well as to expand their electronic plan review team. And then 50,000 for public transit. That's to provide for additional bus stop cleaning and maintenance. So next steps for our budget adoption process. After council action today, we will come back at formal on May 31 for legal budget adoption. That would be tentative adoption. And then June 14 would be our final budget adoption. And then July 3 ends the process with property tax levy adoption. So council, that concludes my presentation. We are recommending approval of the city manager's proposed 2324 budget.
Thank you so much, Amber. Thank you and your team for all the work to get us here today. We'll, we have one member of the public here to speak. So why don't we begin with Santosh?
Good afternoon, distinguished council members and city officials. My name is Santosh, representing Cricket Group. Couple of weeks ago, I was excited to be here to support the diversified budget. Today, I wanted to extend the thanks on behalf of entire cricket community in Arizona, more than 2,000 players who've been more than happy to hear the news about the fund. Not to get into the details, but this is really important because this week is very special for most of us here. We have celebrated Mother's Day and I'm seeing more than 50% of, you know, city officials as women. So, and in Phoenix or in there Arizona, we don't have, not even two players, two female players playing cricket. So this fund will definitely be helpful to develop youth and more importantly, female cricketers. And also, we've been trying to compete with neighboring states, which we were not able to do so because of lack of infrastructures, especially the pitch and the ground. And this initial seed money would help us to overcome those hurdles. And I would like to extend my thanks, especially to Councilwoman Tabestak, Councilwoman Anne O'Brien, Councilman Jim Waring, Betty Guadilla, Kevin Robinson, Kesha Washington, Vice Mayor Ansari, City Manager Jeff, Deputy City Manager Inger, Budget Research Director Amber Williamson, Parks and Recreation Officials Cynthia and Danielle, also a lot of city officials who were working with me relentlessly for past three years. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your testimony. It was about as close to two minutes as possible. That was an impressive organization, both in your time management, as well as to engage the community. We'll look forward to supporting the addition of cricket in this budget. Council member comments.
I have a question. I actually think this is a great solid budget. My question is, with things happening at the legislature, possible cuts, what happens?
Mayor, members of the council, I'll let Amber kind of expand. I mean, at this point, a lot of the conversation at the state is speculative in nature. And so I think we've made very strong commitments to our community and very strong commitments to our, our labor partners. And I think we need to honor those commitments. I think whatever happens at the state legislature, we've got enough runway to figure it out. Fortunately, between Amber and I, you know, we've got years of, of dealing with, with deficits and balancing budgets in troubled times. And so that, that, that doesn't scare me. I think we have ample time to kind of prioritize what, what our priorities are as, as an organization, as a city. But I think today, this budget is fine. I, I think, again, we are living within our means. I, I think the, the practice that we've been doing for the past couple of years with our five-year forecasting and our revenue shocking and the things that we've done to really be very strategic about how we balance our budget and how we spend moving forward, puts us in a very strong position. Now, I say all that, again, knowing that there are these possibilities down the street. But I think we've got the staff and the fortitude to get through that. And so I think right now, the budget that we pass today is one that we can sustain based on what we know as of right now. And I don't know if Amber would like to add anything.
No, I think our city manager did a great job of summarizing. But what I would emphasize is just the point that what we're hearing is that if it were to be transmitted to the governor and if she were to approve eliminating residential rental, it would be effective January of 2025. That would be fiscal year 2425. So this would be adopting the 2324 budget. And we would certainly work with the city council and bring back options if that were to come to pass on ways we can balance the budget.
Thank you. Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. An excellent question, Councilwoman Pastore, because certainly it is frustrating to think that we're doing all the right things and yet the state legislature is continuing to strip, try to strip away local control from cities all over the state and, and could have severe adverse impacts on, on communities. Fortunately, as you both have stated, we're in fairly good condition. That cannot be said for all communities across the state. And I hate to sound like a broken record, but I do want to just make sure that we are going to be able to sustain our, our park security as we go into the next budget year and that we have that plan. You talked about 17% vacancy savings is, is typical. I'd like to know if we're going to be able to use that vacancy savings to continue park security into this coming, upcoming budget year.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman O'Brien, that's a, that's an excellent question. And we started talking about this at the last meeting when we, we talked about the budget. I think with your approval today, there are several things that, that we're already working on. One is that with your approval of today's budget, we can start recruiting for those new positions that become effective July 1, so that we can kind of shorten the gap in the recruiting process and get those folks closer to onboarding by the time we get the budget to potentially eliminate some of that gap. The other thing is a brand new fiscal year brings a brand new start of the, of the finances for every department. So there will be, there will be vacancy savings within the Parks Department that will avail themselves of the opportunity to cover those vacancies with security as well as to look at other opportunities if, if that's necessary. I think the, the other thing that, you know, we've talked about is with the, the salary savings that we have budgeted, there's an opportunity to just evaluate what we have to do longer term with our park security. And, and so I think we've got ample time to do that. We also have year-end savings more than likely that would, could possibly come into that conversation as well.
The park security can be continued with the vacancy savings we have so that we won't experiencing a gap between bringing on park rangers.
That is an option that we can consider. I think one thing that we may have to do is possibly bring that contract back to this body before you go on break so that we have enough expenditure limitation on it so that we can actually increase our spending authority under that contract.
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to, I'm not sure who, if I make that to you, City Man, Jeff, that we do, please bring that back to this body so that we can ensure there is not a gap in service. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Councilwoman O'Brien. I would be pleased to support that. We need to keep investing in safe parks. Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. Like I said, a few weeks ago, I want to personally thank all the incredible city staff that worked on this year's budget hearings. I, I also want to take a moment to once again thank my team in District 5, who engaged over 1,150 residents from our neighborhood for our 2023 Budget Community Engagement Survey. I am especially thankful to Emanuel, Deborah, Melina, everyone in my office that went out there, spoke to residents at all of our different community events, to door-to-door outreach, to talking to folks at our local, at our local small businesses. Thank you guys for all of your hard work. Residents in District 5 talked about a lot of issues as, at the city, from a lack of 911 and crime stop. 911 and crime stop operators, to issues with our bulk trash collection, to the challenges we had opening our pools, or that we still have feeling in our Head Start classrooms. As I said before, we know that these issues have been a direct result of low pay for our city workers. That is why I am so happy to see this budget address low wages head-on. We are allocating 85% or $114 million to wage increases for our city employees. I am happy to support this budget because of the investment it is putting into the people that make our city great. When we take care of them, I know that they will have the resources and support to take care of our residents. I want to especially thank our city manager, Jeff Barton, and his team for bringing us such a comprehensive budget, and I will be voting to support this. I understand the issues at the legis, at, at the legislator. I understand that there's challenging times that might be coming ahead, but I really appreciate what you just said, Jeff, about making sure that we fill our commitments to our constituents. I know a couple of years ago, there was always a sentiment, you know, the first place where we cut is with our employees, and I'm very thankful to you and to everyone that that's not what we're doing today and that we will tackle things head-on as they come upon us and will make the changes we have to make. But we do need to make sure we take care of our workers and that we are able to deliver to our constituents the service that they deserve, and I will be voting yes today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Stark?
Thank you, Mayor. I too will be supporting this budget, and I do want to reiterate to staff that they did a great job on this. This is very complicated because you have to please all of our residents, as well as us as council members, and I do appreciate that juggling act. You do a tremendous job of that, especially you, Amber. Appreciate it. I did have a chance before the budget presentation to chat with the city manager, Mr. Barton, and he did assure me that we still will reevaluate at 3:09 the possibility of putting some money in to help with affordable housing, and so I look forward to that future discussion. Again, this is a great budget. It addressed a lot of needs, and I appreciate your hard work, and I too am very happy for staff. They really do deserve just compensation. They do such great work for us. They really are the ones that make us look good. I mean, you really do. You do outstanding work. So with that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Stark. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I will echo my colleagues. I think while this budget, you know, in prior years, we've had all of these new glamorous new programs, while we don't have that this year, I think this is one of the strongest budgets and one of the most important budgets that we'll be voting on, and we have in many years. Paying competitive wages to our employees will not only provide meaningful improvements to the quality of life of, of those employees, but also ensure that we can continue to provide the very basic and critical services that our residents are asking for. What I'm really excited that that will mean is hopefully, you know, within our planning department, we'll be able to streamline and approve housing projects much faster. We'll be hiring more park rangers to keep our parks safe, which residents are really excited about. And honestly, another piece that I'm very excited about in our budget is the allocation for homeless emergency services. Talked about how successful the cleanup engagement efforts are down by the Human Services Campus, and with 70% of individuals accepting shelter, and we know so many across our city need it, this will, this allocation will help us house 420 individuals in shelter. It includes two facilities, the 22nd Avenue Shelter in District 7 and the Rio Fresco Healing Center. So I'm really appreciative of that allocation and hope that we'll continue to prioritize housing and combating homelessness in our budgets moving forward. And while I'm disappointed that public bathrooms did not make it in this budget, I'm encouraged by conversations I've had with our city manager and the Director of Community and Economic Development around how we can work with our downtown stakeholders to bring public bathroom access to transit stops downtown. Thank you so much. Looking forward to voting yes.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington?
Thank you, Mayor. I too echo my colleagues' comments and sentiments regarding our staff. I think it's a truly a great showing of the, of the value that they bring to the city, and we want to make sure they're adequately compensated. I, I know it's one thing to say you're competitive, but I think it's more important to say it's a reflection of the value that they bring to the city and to recognize that they are our most valuable asset, and we are invested in that. So I am pleased to vote yes on the ballot, I'm sorry, on the, the budget, as well as I actually wanted to take a moment also to say thank you. One of the first things I had an opportunity to do while, when I was waiting to be sworn is attend the D8 budget hearing, public hearing, and I'm grateful to see that a majority of the feedback that we received at that public meeting was incorporated and somehow into the budget. So I commend, I commend Jeff, I commend you, Amber, for the ability to make sure that we continue to remain in a fiscally sound manner while incorporating the feedback from our community members. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I too am looking forward to supporting the budget. We are investing in our city workforce. Those are the folks who deliver the level of service that our residents deserve. We also make investments in housing and services for those who are most vulnerable. We work to mitigate the impacts of climate change. We are passing this budget between Mother's Day and Father's Day, and so the investment in early childhood is timely, as it always is, to invest in our youngest residents who are our future. Appreciate all the city staff who participated in more than 12 community meetings and understood hundreds of comments. We did receive comments in the budget process that were more of a policy nature or of, of ideas about how to look at programs, and we will continue to work to move those forward as well when appropriate. So thank you to those who just are focusing on how we could be a better city. I join Councilwoman Pastor in being concerned about the residential rental tax would be a cut of more than $80 million to the city of Phoenix and hit targeted areas, including our transportation investments, the multiple public safety initiatives that our voters have passed at the ballot, parks and preserve funding, as well as our general fund. In the past, when the legislature has made changes to our city tax code, they have backfilled with funding from elsewhere, and I certainly hope that they will value the work that our first responders in infrastructure, social services that we do at the city of Phoenix and find a way to make up for any cuts should they decide to move forward with those. I still maintain concern about some of that, that happening is related to the debt ceiling and what that will mean for our economy, and we'll continue to watch that. It is possible we may need to adjust mid-year, depending on what is in front of us, but we will try to, to be nimble and, and to still deliver for our residents. I'm hopeful that next year, we can make some additional economic development investments, including on the international side, and continue to have flexible funds, including to invest in the efficiency of our operations, energy efficiency, solar, and more, that can really make sure we are spending less on energy and more on programs. So we have a lot of exciting opportunities still in front of us, but it will be good to move and take our first step forward in this multi-step process to approve the city budget. At this time, we will go into our formal action item. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Guardado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Councilwoman O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pastor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Waring?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ansari?
Here.
Mayor Gallego?
Here. Item 1 transmits a balanced budget for the fiscal year 2023 to '24. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I move approval of the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 budget.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? And just to confirm with our clerk, this is a voice vote.
Yes, Mayor, you can do a voice vote.
Would anyone like? Okay, we'd like individual votes, so we'll do roll call.
Guardado?
Here.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
I'm waiting for woo-hoo, yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Mayor, permission to briefly explain my vote?
Please do.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I am going to be voting no, but it's not a reflection of any of the work of the staff. Jeff, you had committed to me at being of the year, or probably in the last year, that this was going to be a more back-to-basics budget. That's, it's already been alluded to by another member, but this is exactly what it was, not adding any new stuff. I thought we got badly distracted the last few years. Frankly, while our roads were crumbling and, you know, we had the homeless situation spiraling out of hand, we were off talking about a lot of other stuff, and that was very frustrating to me. But you did say that that was going to be at an end this year, and that was true, and I appreciated that very much. As always, I say this every year, for about the last decade, most of you weren't here for, for some of that or most of that period, their data forecasting and analysis of what's going to happen, I, I gotta believe it's the most accurate in the country. I mean, Warren Buffett probably doesn't do a better job than you guys do of predicting, like, where the economy is going to go, what our revenues are going to look like. I have no reason to believe that's going to be any different here, so I have every confidence if something does change that you'll be able to, to navigate us through it. I did contemplate voting yes on this, probably to the surprise of anyone who knows me, but I will say, there are just, there are too many holdovers from previous years that made that impossible for me. But I do appreciate this year's focus on the things that I think residents are really noticing and that are, have come back to bite us now because of inaction. So again, that's the fault of elected members, not, not you guys. But, but I'm going to vote no, but I do appreciate your work on this very much. Thank you.
Ansari?
Yes.
This budget does have exciting new things, including a fire station in Awatuki, so I am excited to support it. I vote yes.
Passes 8-1.
That concludes today's agenda. Thank you so much for joining us. We are adjourned.